You all stand with me for the pledge of allegiance. We have to.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So I agree with the discussion with public input of the emergency medical, that be the ambulance services within Logan County. And I guess you guys, all of you pretty well know what the situation is. Currently, I believe Guthrie Ambulance Service is now serving Crescent and move up the issues that you have with the ambulance service and your EMS board. And so that's part of what we're looking at. Now, I have a lot of my area that's not any part of an ambulance district. And so the Guthrie City Ambulance Services said that they no longer can provide adequate service outside of their district. So we need to address this issue, and that is the purpose of the meeting. So I would ask that anybody who would like to speak about this, tell us your name so we can get that correct for the record. And keep it fairly short and to the point, so that then others can also speak. So I appreciate that. And so, Monty, you got anything to say? And then maybe Marvin, then we'll open it up for discussion.
I've got a lot to say. I don't know where to start. If you don't understand what a 522 ambulance district is, it takes in a school district. We've got three in the county. We've got Cashion, Crescent, and Guthrie. Guthrie says that they're going to stay within their boundaries under a 522. Crescent, you know, the situation here, we don't have enough, really don't have enough money. So our options are going to be a countywide 522, unless y'all got some different ideas on funding. I personally don't want a countywide 522. I'd like to have local control where we got it now, but we got to salvage it somehow. So if y'all got some ideals, let's hear them.
I guess from my viewpoint, I haven't been interested yet to getting more money or raising more revenue or making a larger ambulance organization, one big organization for the county is actually the solution to the issues because the issues are buried among these small communities in our county. I like to see smaller organizations work at a closer level with local, with the local communities, like these ambulance services, rather than have one big one trying to service the whole county. I'm not sure that it's a money issue. From what I hear, we're having problems attracting qualified people. So it just, it could be the, a matter of contract.
Well, I personally think it is a money thing because of the day of the volunteers. Crescent EMS District brings in roughly seventy-seven thousand dollars a year. There's no way you can staff an ambulance service at seventy-seven thousand dollars. Guthrie, I think they bring in close to three-hundred-and-fifty thousand. I think they do fairly well, but they are running outside of their boundaries and they do say they're going to quit. Seventy-seven thousand ain't going to.
For you that don't know, the law is that there can be three types of EMS districts. There can be one that is only in the city limits, it's the boundary. The second is a boundary line that include, is the school district boundary, like Guthrie School District and Crescent School District. Also, Cashion is the school district. And then the only other option is a countywide district. This is, three mills is the max that you can put on that, that would go on your property taxes with an EMS district. And those who are already in one of these school districts are already paying that three mills. So that would not change if you went to a countywide school, uh, countywide EMS district. So it doesn't affect you, other than now you're having this Crescent ambulance problem. So how you want to fix it is there. For me over on my side, it may be we want to go to a school district and keep it separate from, from these other two. They could still contract with the City of Guthrie for ambulance service, or they could contract with Perkins for that, whoever that might be able to have ambulance service. Say, we want to take that three mills, which would be a whole lot in my area. But, you know, they could opt for doing that if they thought that they could get an ambulance service to, to provide an ambulance service. So.
Mike, if I could add to the, you talked about the school district, 522. It can be either one or multiple school districts, 522. So it doesn't have to be just one school district. It can be several, like the ones up north here. We've got two school districts up north here. Those two could combine. They also have issues up, up north with ambulance services as well, the northern part of the county. So it doesn't just have to be one school district combined to do that. It doesn't have to be the whole county to do it either.
Well, school districts overlap, is what you mean?
No, no. What I mean is two separate school districts can form one 522 board.
He's saying Maho Orlando School District can form a 522.
Oh, I see.
Then they can neither rent a service themselves, contract with the city again.
Yeah.
Well, Maho Orlando and Crescent could come together and form one, too. But I mean, multiple, or three school districts could do it. I mean, it doesn't have to be just.
Prior to 2010, when the law was changed, it was required that the nearest ambulance respond regardless of districts. That was changed in 2010 because some of the ambulance districts were having money issues. And it allows them to opt out of providing service outside their contracted area. So that's the issue that's come up with Guthrie. And so now here we are.
What I'd like to point out is, the Board of County Commissioners, the only thing that we have to do with the EMS is appointing the 522 board members. They're day-to-day operations. We have nothing to do with it. We just appoint the board members.
Board members, then, that's the board, the EMS board. And they receive the three mills, and then they give that money to that contracted ambulance service to provide ambulance inside the district that they're over.
Bob, did you have a question?
Well, you answered one of them. Have we received any bids from other services?
Bob, why Bill?
Have we received any bids, offers, quotes from other services, what their charges would be to provide ambulance service?
You know, I personally have talked, talked to some different people, different districts, and yeah, they do have some offers, but that's kind of up to the 522 board to decide. It's not up to us. I think they're going to meet tomorrow morning at seven-thirty. They've got a new board in place. It sounded pretty positive to me, but there again, I'm not on that board. I don't know.
Right. In my area, I think Langston has made some inquiries, the City of Langston, as to what ambulance service might be able to be, provide service in their area. They're saying there's really not enough subscribers in there to make it available. There's another ambulance service in Lincoln County who is going to do a presentation in Coles at our meeting there. And we'll see what he has to say about alternative services for our rural area. But we don't know. In a five, in a countywide 522, would it generate more money than we're already getting right now by including these other little cities that are not?
It would. Like, right now, if you combine the two biggest districts in the county, they're getting roughly about four-hundred-and-eighty thousand a year. If we went countywide, we speculated we got a million dollars a year for the 522. My thoughts on the countywide 522, if we went to a countywide 522, how are we going to set the board up so it's fair throughout the county? You can't let Guthrie have all control. You can't let Crescent have control. That's why I don't like the countywide 522 myself, is I like the local control so they can dictate where the substation's going to be, where it's not.
Under a countywide 522, do you have the option of having different, quote, satellites or whatever? And how is that handled as far as actual coverage?
Sure. The way I understand it would work is, again, that would be up to the board. And to kind of echo what, what Monty said, the reason that I don't like the big 522 is because what we'll have done is we will have taken the same issues that the smaller 522s are dealing with today and just kind of glommed it all together under one, one central leadership, right? So now you've got a bigger group with a bigger area with the same problem. And, and so, yes, they can, the board, to answer your question, the board can put whatever type of ambulance service together that they think is appropriate and needed. But that's their call, not ours again. All we would be able to do would be to appoint those board members if by election, the people in the county, they wanted to do that.
And that would be regionalized, regionalized on, on the different members. I mean, there'd be members from the three different districts is how we would appoint them. And, but I, too, I don't like centralization of government agencies and forces. I just don't care for it. But.
You had the three districts.
Dylan Davis.
You had the three districts, you're, you're still going to have to roll, Guthrie's still going to have, they're still going to get calls from Maho and Orlando. They're already rolling there, aren't they?
That's, that's right.
That's right.
And so if you, if you don't go to countywide, if you're going to have the three districts, they're still going to get calls from there, you know? And if we don't vote Marshall, Marshall's going to be called.
Yeah. I'm not totally against the 522. What I'd like to do is salvage what we have. If that don't work, I'm ready to go countywide 522 myself. My, my first thought was salvage what we have. I think it'd be better for the people. Next step, plan B would be countywide 522, unless we can think of another way to fund it.
Well, it would already, you'd already be doubling, doubling the amount of money right now that's already coming in.
You're doubling the money, but you're doubling the coverage as well.
That's true. Now, you can have multiple ambulance services that they, that EMS board, county EMS board would be able to contract with. They don't have to just contract with Guthrie or something such as that. There'd be other ambulance services that they could contract with also.
Yes, we, state your name, please.
David Rader, is there any way that the county is able to acquire the mill levy for, say, Marshall? Okay, Crescent, what Crescent's currently covering up until the 26th of October. Is there any way that we can collect the mill levy from Marshall or Orlando or parts of Orlando and the areas that we've been covering without going to countywide?
I think the answer to that, yes. If Covington Douglas would do a 522 district, then, you know, if they would contract the Marshall area to Crescent, yeah, they could cover it that way. Maho Orlando would do the same and contract with Guthrie. But getting them to do that, I mean, we, we can't tell them what to do.
They'd have to vote.
But yes, that's an option.
I mean, that way it would still be able to be kept, the control would still be already kept local versus y'all having the headache of having to appoint a countywide board and oversee it.
But I don't know, I don't know if the Covington district would pass that because it goes clear almost to Garber. And I, it'd be hard to pass that because those up there have a, Garber has an ambulance, and they're going to vote. It'd be hard to, I don't know. It might pass it. The ones on this end, of course, they're going to go, yeah, but the ones on the north end are going to go.
Well, if the Garber School District.
If they were to pass it north of the Logan County line, wouldn't that go to Garber? Since they covered Covington?
Well, what is their district boundary? Covington. Or Garber, I mean, Garber.
Doesn't that just flow with Kingfisher County?
Yeah. I mean, they overlap into Logan County, but right now we overlap into Kingfisher County as well.
Correct. We covered up to Banaroo.
But I think what Dylan's saying is, I don't think that this, if Covington Douglas done a 522, there's no way we can cover that whole area.
Right. But if we, like, per se, Cashion, well, no, that wouldn't work. Okay, I see what you're saying. It's one service covering both areas of Cashion.
That's a great issue.
One of the things back to, you know, the, the expense for running an ambulance service, that service has gotten a lot more expensive over the last five, 10 years. I mean, really has, just to be able to operate that. So, I mean, the, the monies that we get from the three mills, the original, I don't think the legislature ever intended that to pay for the entire thing. That's why they've allowed those boards to also put a, a charge. You can put a charge on, an additional charge on the ambulance front to, to make up the difference in your cost, to make sure that you're not losing money on those fronts as well. Now, collecting, charging and collecting is two different things. I understand that. I've been in business, so I just wanted, but I just wanted to throw that out as an option as well. That is available to the local boards as well.
The 522 was passed in 1976. It was assessed at three mills. I mean, personally, I talked to the state representative. I think it's time maybe to look at that three mills and maybe raise it to five mills to generate more money. We can't operate today like we did in 1976.
Well, it sounds like there's a funding issue regardless. I mean, if you go, you say even if we go countywide, there's still the same issue that there's not enough funding. So to me, it just, it's blaring that there needs to be revisited on that and see what needs to be done. It sounds like there's going to be a deficiency even if you go to a countywide district.
Well, if you went to the countywide 522, I would assume that Guthrie's still going to be the main one in the Maho Orlando and Langston area. And I would think we'd have a substation in Guthrie to cover Crescent, or Crescent to cover Marshall and this area over here. But I don't know that that 522 board would do that.
You can't guarantee anything other than appointing a board, and that's kind of where it gets scary for us is we don't have, there, there doesn't have to be a plan in place to make it better in order to implement a countywide board. I mean, just implement, implement the countywide board isn't addressing the problem. The countywide board would then need to address the problem. I think we would need to understand what type of process we might, they, they might look at, but we wouldn't know who they are until they were appointed, right, from the appointment point. So it's kind of like chasing a tail. The other thing is, we'd have to dismantle all the 522 boards that we have in the state now, and that has to be done around both the people as well. So that, that has to happen in sequence. So we have to dismantle what we got now before we can vote to have a countywide 522. So that both of those have to pass votes in all of those districts. So it's kind of a complicated issue to make happen.
My main goal, like I said, was salvage what we got that don't work countywide 522.
That's the best and easiest way is.
How do we salvage what we have?
That's what I'm here for, to find out. I was hoping you'd have the answer, but I don't have one.
My name's Carrie Deere. How can we increase the funding to keep the 522 here in Crescent locally? Is there, other than going to five mills, is there another way that we can increase revenue?
I don't know what it would be.
There would be put a charge on each, each run, an additional charge on each run.
It's already done, but Medicare Medicaid, only going to pay maybe $100 if you're only going to see 400.
Uh, you know, reimbursing, like I said, charging's one thing, getting reimbursed by the federal government's another, getting people to pay the reimburse, the charges is another. Whether Medicare or Medicaid reimburses them or not, or whomever, I mean, you can still put a, put a different charge on it. It doesn't have to be the Medicare Medicaid.
Well, you can, but make sure you have to look.
Could you, could you stand up and talk a little bit louder?
Eric Carter, you've got your fire department. You can put whatever charge you want out there, but if you look nationwide, billing rates are based off the Medicare pricing bills. Because that's one money you can guarantee that you will get in the mountain. You cannot balance bill Medicare customers. That's against the law. Therefore, you bill 1200, you get 3500, that's what you get. You can't balance billings. It's against the law. Same way with private carriers. You're forced with what insurance is anymore to enter into a contract with these insurance carriers and be in their network because you at least get net, in-network premiums because you don't get less. But if you sign that contract and get in this insurance company's network, then you can't balance bill their customers either because it violates your agreement with them. So you have to err on the side of safety to try to get as much as you can out of your bill. And it works the same way with hospitals and doctors and everything else. So we're kind of bound by that.
Carrie, back to your, the only, we've, we've, I've talked, not we, but I have talked to the City of Crescent, and they've talked about a dollar fifty on water meters that they would donate, you know, once a month. That's one thing. I have spoke to Logan County Rural Water to see if they can legally do the same and if they would do it. But other than that, I, I don't have no answers.
Can somebody go and request that the mills be raised to five?
Well, I have visited with our state, our representative, and he allows he could never get it passed. So you can't get it passed if you don't put it out internationally. But you know, we're, we're all paying a quarter cent sales tax for the fire departments. Most people, all the questions I've had in the last two months have been, well, how come that sales tax ain't? It's two different deals. It's a fire tax, and EMS gets nothing from that sales tax. Everyone in their mind thinks it's all one deal, and it's not.
One thing that people may be getting a little, what, wrong idea about on ambulances, ambulances are for transport. They're for, what do they call it, ALS? Anyhow, they're, they're for transport, keeping them stable and transporting them. So we have first responders with all of our fire departments. Several of them have EMTs that also work there. And then there is the option of getting a membership with a helicopter or medevac. And that's fairly cheap. I just did that since I'm in the Coles District and wondering if I'm going to be able to get an ambulance. But being out in the outback sometimes, I'm kind of wondering, wow, how is an ambulance ever even going to be able to get to me? But for my household, that sixty-five dollars a year, that's not too shabby.
But with that, you can't pick the phone up and call them, they're not coming.
No, you can't do that. You have to have an EMR or EMT or somebody like that call.
Well, then maybe we should check into adding some sales tax to the water bill or, like you said, something like that.
Yeah, well, I've talked to them. I mean, I don't know that they will or can legally. But probably the fairest thing to do though would be on the record meter because not everybody's got rural water in the city.
Yeah, that's true.
So really, we're kind of double taxing the people in, in the school district, which ain't fair.
Yeah.
I mean, the problem is, the people outside of the districts is getting service for nothing, basically. That's why the countywide 522 would probably be the fairest option to go. But you need to be pretty careful about how you set up the 522 board, to make sure it stays even. Somebody got something?
Monty?
Yes, Mark Radford. Have, have the districts, the 522 districts put out a practical cost analysis to run viable operation for a year based upon maybe not a living wage, but a twelve-dollar wage or something above minimum wage and so you can get in, get the personnel? Has that been done by anybody?
You know, I don't know if the 522 boards have done it, but I mean, I've done the simple math on it. I figured that eleven dollars an hour if you had EMT staff for 24 hours a day, seven days a week, just one EMT would be three hundred, or a hundred and thirty thousand something a year with, with the insurance and everything on top of that. Currently, we're getting seventy-seven thousand in the Crescent area from abhorrent taxes.
For one deal, for Crescent, it costs 245,000 a year at a seven dollars and twenty-five cents an hour per unit. So you get 245,000 a year, we get 77,000, and then other comes through billing and subsidies. I mean, it really gets you close every time. And that's, that's our biggest problem, is they're paying 745.
But then that's just personnel. That's not including overhead. That's obviously.
Well, you're giving 7,000. All the others are personnel.
The equipment purchase with the different, with the different bond, you get another three mills for that bond for equipment, and a different three mills for the operation. So there is that available with those boards.
I was in the city Tuesday at a meeting, and I learned down there that the libraries in Norman and Oklahoma City, they get six mills off the abhorrent taxes, and then we get three for our ambulance service. They said they had more money, they didn't know how to spend it off.
Something's wrong there.
Then again, you have all districts aren't equal in what that three bills brings in based upon property values.
Say it again, Monty.
I said, but then again, you have a difference between what that three bills brings in for each 522 due to the property values.
Right. Works the rules up here, our evaluations ain't all that high on foreign land, so, you know, has a whole lot to do with it. So has anyone got any solutions, ideals, if we can come up with more money? At the end of the day, it's all about money. I know they say it's about personnel, but personnel's about money, so.
So if we're counting wide 522, half our county's not paying for their services, that's a half a million dollars playing out there that could go to EMS.
I can't hear you. Ross, sorry.
If you could stand up, talk a little louder.
You've got half the county that's paying for each EMS services. You contract that other half the county in there under a county 522, that's a half a million dollars out there that can go straight to EMS. You know, a hundred thousand dollars, that's about what it needs to take inside the Crescent EMS district to keep it going. And that's, that's probably too expensive.
You know, my biggest problem with the countywide 522 is, how can I go to Marshall and convince them people to vote for a 522, and your service ain't going to be no better today than what it is, you know, next week when we pass this? It's going to be pretty, pretty service for them.
Yes, yes.
At least they got some.
It will be service.
Yeah, right. I agree.
It'll be twice the service because it'll be twice as much money. What? I don't know. I don't know. Well, I mean.
Currently, Marshall's having to hope that Guthrie or Garber can get to them. Where if Crescent was back up and operational, normally fifteen minutes, we were there.
Well, Hennessy will be quicker.
Hennessy's likely to guard her.
If they have Hennessy.
I, I agree with you, Ross. There is a half a million dollars sitting there. I understand that.
Has anyone done a projection to see if the countywide 522 were to be put in place, what percentage was going to Guthrie and what percentage was coming to Crescent?
It really don't work like that. It'd be up to the new 522 board to decide where they're going to put ambulance service, who they're going to contract with. They might not even use Guthrie, they might not use Crescent, they might bring in EMTs or Lifeline or whoever. I mean, it'd be up to the 522 board to decide that. That's why I'm talking about local control. Right now, we've got local people sitting on our 522 board.
Another question. I've seen other counties provide EMS services, as in the county, like Jefferson County EMS, such as that. Is that a possibility or an option?
It would be if I could cut out y'all salaries.
Well, if it went to a countywide 522, would the county run it?
No, it'd be the 522 board that ran it. It's the way the law's set up.
Yeah. I think that's how Jefferson County would do it.
Now, I'm assuming they could probably contract with the county if the county wanted to get in the medical business, but we're going to track some potlucks patched. Not doing very good, Danny. Agreed. Well, I'm talking about you two.
Oh, I'm good on that.
I'm good, sure.
So as, so as county commissioners, your job is to appoint people to a 522 board. So what is the steps that need to be taken to start a countywide 522?
Well, I think the fir, I think the first step would be, the 522 boards we have in place would have to come to us and say, hey, we want to dissolve what we have.
You're talking Guthrie, Crescent, and Cashion?
Yes. Yes.
Currently in the county?
I think they would have to pass it through their board to consider dissolving what they have. Then we'd have to put it on the ballot as a two-part question where dissolve this and start this is what I think, but I'm not a hundred percent sure.
I believe it takes to vote the people inside the district to dissolve the district. You have to dissolve all three and then form one big. So each district, people inside it have to vote, and you have to get a majority vote to dissolve it, and then you can make the new one.
And it also has to be a vote of that district that's in the other counties. So they have to have that on the ballot as well to dissolve that.
What about five twenty-two?
It'd take in, what, Cashion, Logan, Canadian? So we'd have to have an election in all them counties.
And that's just to form the district for, that would cover county, which is not by county geographic lines, but by.
That's a bit complicated.
Patty James, I just wondered if the countywide were to happen, what would happen with Cashion that's divided? How would that end up being served?
It wouldn't be an ambulance district anymore.
It, it stopped at the county line.
So the Logan County services would serve portion of the community, and then they would have to deal with something else for the other part?
I assume what would happen is the new five twenty-two board would contract with the city of Cashion to cover that area.
The entire area.
Right. I just assumed they would. I don't, can't say that.
Yeah, it's fine first. See what they do.
So let's say, everybody says, okay, it looks like the only option is for us to go to a countywide. And the other districts, we have to dissolve our county first, I mean, our district first, the way I understand it. Then they have to vote to enact the, the countywide. If the other voters don't go for that, we dissolved our district.
I, I think the way that would work, Bob, is contingent that this passes, this will dissolve. If it don't pass, this will dissolve. Anybody got any great ideals? Geraldine, I know you do.
Of course I don't.
So what have you guys discovered so far that could be viable funding sources?
The only thing I've.
Let's make a list. What's available out there for us to utilize?
The only thing I've seen that can happen illegally that I know of is the countywide five twenty-two.
Sales tax?
I think that would be an option. I think you'd have a tough time passing it.
Not only that, but it's very hard to budget sales tax because it goes up and down so precipitously.
What about memberships?
I, I think they have discussed it. I, I've talked to the EMS people up here, and some of them like the ideals, some of them don't like the ideals. Some of them say it's a bad deal. I, I couldn't tell you one way or the other.
You know, memberships are great, but if you have population history, it's all based on population history. You pay three dollars a year for a household, well, if you don't have the households to do it, you're only bringing in, you know, fifteen thousand a year on it. Well, it can be a win-lose situation. You're getting a great deal if you don't have an ambulance bill. But, you know, we could get to the point where we're actually losing much on the situation. Or it's costing us more than that, you know, two, twenty thousand a year that we're bringing in from membership because we're not bringing in any of that. There's guidelines to a membership. I believe Cashion has one. I'm not sure if y'all see it or not. But, you know, there's certain things that it falls on, you know, you spend your total, just like three hundred and twenty. It, it, it's a win-lose situation. We look into a random population and see, really do it and make it work right. Does that make sense?
What would it take to get it on, the rural cooperatives here to get five dollars added on to everyone's bill? What do they have to do? What we have to do?
Yeah, I, I don't know.
I think you'd have to get with their board and see if they want to do something like that. How they would change it themselves, I guess, you know?
You was with me today. I mean, we kind of started that process with Logan County Rural Water number two. I have spoke to Logan County Rural Water three about doing that, but I think probably the fairest thing would be electric meters.
Well, you're gonna say on the water deal, it's not fair because I have, I have groundwater, you know, I'm not paying the water bill. Well, actually, there's so many people that's not on the water.
I can tell you, there's nothing in the law that would require any electric company to do that kind of a surcharge. And I already know that O G and E would not be willing to do that at all. And I'm pretty sure the C R A C, which is my electric company, they would not want to do that at all.
Have you spoke to them about that? I mean, how can you say they won't if you haven't spoke to them?
I, I've talked to several people, yes.
It's more work for them.
It's caused them to do that for us.
What was it you were saying about the, the mill levy? You said three percent mill levy or?
When, when you enact a new five twenty-two district, you can, there's, there's two separate three-mill questions that can go on the ballot. The, the first one is a three-mill to actually enact five twenty-two district. And that's an ongoing operational, uh, three mills to, to operate the district. And then there's an additional three mills that can go on that to, to pay for a bond that can, that's voted on, that can be voted on at the same time or later time. But you can, you can put an additional three mills, get an additional three mills to pay a bond for equipment, for like ambulances, and that's what they.
Anybody? Dylan, you ain't gonna have nothing?
I am a lot.
Give it to us.
You don't want to hear it, though.
That it? I don't hear nothing.
All right, then we'll close the discussion, move on to item number four, consideration post-lax on German. All in favor? Motion carries. The yard is dismissed.
Well, thanks for coming.